Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Health meeting of July...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, says the sheriff.
Is it close?
He's in timeout, man. He's not supposed to talk.
Oh, that's right. Sixteenth? All right. Well, we're in July.
Lead me down the path.
That's how I got to timeout.
Pipping. Five more minutes, sir. I would like to remind everybody that this is an open meeting. According to Nevada state law, we are being televised. I would like to have a roll call, please. Sheriff Furlong. Supervisor Boggs. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Still here.
Mayor Kroll.
I'm here and I'm not in timeout.
Supervisor Bagwell. Supervisor Sherrod. Dr. Penpar.
Here.
Sorry. We have a warm. Thank you. The first order of business is public comment. This is a time when members of the public are encouraged to come before the Board of Health, express any kudos, concerns, or other issues that they may wish regarding health matters in the city. Seeing no public comment, I would like to welcome members of the Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Board of Trustees. Ed Epperson is the CEO. Where'd you go? There you are. Let me put up my log. And Ed, if you wouldn't mind having, coming forward, maybe at the podium and introduce your members, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah. Are we on? Yes, thank you. From Carson Tahoe's Board, Don Haddaway, Larry Messina, Gil Yannick, Bruce Robertson, almost called her Rudy, and Dr. Jeffrey Bossa. Also representing at least organization is Michael Black. It's our counsel. We also have several folks that are going to make presentations or discussion. They can introduce themselves at times, if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Perfect. Thank you. We appreciate you coming, everyone. We are going to make it a nice, fast meeting, so you can go do other meetings, whatever you want. I do have a couple of things to mention, although there's not going to be any typical reports, as would be usual, from the health officer or the health department director. But I do want to mention a couple of things before we forget. One is that Carson City will be the host site for a remote area medical clinic that's going to be held in the middle of October, October 16th, 17th, and 18th. At this clinic, free dental, free optometric, and free medical services will be offered to any member of the community who so desires. The website is RAMUSA.org, and they are in quite severe need of medical, dental, optometric professionals to volunteer, as well as members of the general public. The clinic expects somewhere on the order of 1,500 to 1,600 patients to show up, and they typically need 250 to 300 volunteers. So if you're at all interested, they would certainly appreciate your volunteering. Also want to mention, it's not too early to think about flu vaccines. Flu clinics have been scheduled. There will not be, as we mentioned last year, a general drive-by shooting this year, sadly. I know.
Be again.
But there are a variety of clinics being scheduled for various locations across the city, as well as a very concerted effort to get into all the schools in Carson City and shoot those little children before they can get sneezed, before they can sneeze on you. And then last but not least, we have tobacco quit line magnets in the back. If you have a break room in your place of business, please take one, put it on the break room. The tobacco quit line is currently being funded through the state to Carson City for the region, and it is the only tobacco cessation service offered by the state of Nevada or offered locally. So we want everybody to know about it. So that was enough of the ads. Our first item for discussion will be given by Kitty McKay.
No.
Where am I? Oh, sorry. Approval of minutes. Sorry.
I move to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2015.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion. Now, Mrs. McKay, where'd she go? There, sorry.
So hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Can you touch on the microphone? Now you can hear me. Hi, everybody. I am so lucky to be the one to report on this collaboration for sexual assault forensic exams, and there's a large group that's been working on this project for about 12 months. The community realized it's really not only a hardship, but a barrier to have sexual assaults occurring in Reno. So a group pulled together, and this group is so well-represented here. Representatives from the city, the DA's office, Health and Human Services, Sheriff's Department, Advocates to End Domestic Violence, Carson Tahoe, and Supervisor Aipowd. And a solution's been created. There's a dedicated facility room now in the Carson Tahoe Health Specialty Medical Center. It's a dedicated room, and all the medications and supplies will be donated by Carson Tahoe. All the equipment necessary to perform the exams have been pooled resources through all these different people that are participating on the task force, and that's from the culpa scope equipment, to the gurneys, to locking, evidence cabinets, all of that. And we are, Health and Human Services is contracting with Dr. Shannon Hess to be the medical director. That's in process and soon to be complete. And additionally, the nurse examiners are going to be working through the Health and Human Services, as is billing. And so we're expecting that this will all be pulled together, and hopefully by early fall, we'll be actively being able to do exams locally, which is such a great service to be offering to our people, and it's just really been an honor to work with such a collaborative, earnest, passionate group that cares about their community.
Thank you, Kitty. I would refer members of the public to this report that she has left in the back that summarizes that. Are there questions for Mrs. McKay? Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, thank you, to Carson Tahoe Hospital for stepping up for the location, which was a huge roadblock for us, and thank you for everyone that participated in this effort.
Thank you. Sheriff Furlong, little update of a meeting you actually went to. I mean, typically attend.
Am I invited out of timeout? Thank you. I appreciate it. The next item's kind of a regional, where are we standing with mental health? And so I'm going to stall and talk for a few minutes while a couple of folks come up to the microphones up here, Ms. Mary Walker and Doc Joe, if you guys don't mind. It's very important for the community to understand how we've progressed on. Back in 2006, our esteemed Judge Tatro specifically set up a diversion court here in Carson City dealing with mental health. Shortly after that, we had the Sheriff's Department recognize there were better ways of dealing with some of our situations, and we implemented what's known now as crisis intervention training. Fast forward, it took a couple of years for all of these things to really sink in, and Doc Joe, sitting in front of us, is our leader on the page with this. He implemented a forensic assessment services triage team, otherwise known as FAST. The reason that this is important is because that was the first real mechanism that grabbed, at least from the law enforcement perspective, the value of treating mental health versus incarcerating. We saw in the first six months of Doc Joe's program implementation, about a 20% reduction in the number of people in our jails. So it was a different approach, and it really, it took off. Within two years, and if I don't, if you guys don't mind, we had two officers, Becca, I just called you an officer, two folks that were out on the streets in a mobile outreach safety program implemented in 2014, fostered out of the mental health program from Doc Joe's. They actually take our services right straight out on the street, checking on people, managing their progress, and ensuring referrals are done with handoff precision. Right along with that, in 2014, we have implemented our juvenile justice assistance services team at the detention center for juveniles, and this past year, our community coalition with the hospital. What this means, in a nutshell, is I've just driven it up to this magnificent point that we are at, and I've spoken with Mr. Epperson about it. Carson City has done extraordinarily well at bringing to the surface level the need to address mental health issues in this community, and then I'm going to ask Mary Bryant to kind of kick in where we're at, because it's not just Carson City, and it goes to the point of this agenda item. It is our region. So Mary?
Thank you. For the record, Mary Walker. About a year ago, Richard Whitley, who is now the Director of Health and Human Services at the state, saw me. We were at a legislative hearing, and he asked me if I was interested in coordinating a regional mental health group to work with the state to look at regional mental health and how we can improve it. And I said, absolutely. So we started on this endeavor, I think our first meeting was November, and when we meet, we probably have 30-plus people. But one of the things I get from Richard Whitley and Dr. Tracy Green at the state is that they can't get this type of group of people in Clark and Washoe County. But who comes to these meetings are our city and county managers, Ed Epperson, President and CEO of Carson Tahoe Hospital, our fire chiefs. It is an incredible collaboration, and then the state brings probably about 15 of their staff, everyone from Medicaid to mental health services to EMS. And what we talk about is what are the problems and how do we fix them? It's really focused on how we fix them. Some of the things that we have worked on, and it's, all it is, is it's just adding to what this great person has done in our communities. He's really quite something, and I know Southern Nevada's wanted to steal him away, so we have to keep him here. But some of the things were to look at, like our sheriffs, their concern is they don't have detox services. We don't have enough detox services. Well, now Vitality, because of this group and this interaction and discussion, Vitality is opening beds for detox in this area. We're also in conversation with West Care, if that could step in at some point in time for expansion of mental health services. We looked at the Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services, NAMS, the process in admitting patients transferred from the hospital emergency rooms, as well as the jail, and how do we streamline that? So that's being worked on. One of the things that I think Dr. Joe pointed out also was educating judges regarding the legal 2000 and the processes, to get that going more smoothly. And so we're, that's one of the items to do. One of the biggest thing was to, the state has offered to fund a regional mental health coordinator. And that is, fortunately, Carson Health Hospital, thank goodness, they have taken that on. And one of the things that this person would do, and they just are coming on at this point, is, and this is Carson, Douglas, and Lyon at this point, is that if they have somebody that needs services, a lot of times our people out on the street or the people in the jails, they don't know what's available, what services are available that this person could go to. So they could call the regional mental health coordinator, who would know how many beds Vitality has, how many beds Carson Tahoe Mental Behavioral Health has, what type of services are out there, to get them, to get them the services that they need. We're also talking potential paramedic and sheriff transport right to behavioral health facilities, not just to the ER or the jail, but to actual mental health facilities, and to get reimbursed for it. So that's something that we're all working on. As well as a lot of other things, crisis call off-hours, expanding those. The state has been just marvelous to work with, and what we're trying to do is follow this gentleman's lead right here and give him any kind of support and tools that we have to, you know, get this off the ground. And Dr. Joe is working in Douglas County. Lyon County is in a lot of need for these services, too, so things are starting to branch out to Lyon County also. So it's really quite exciting, and want to thank everybody for participating.
How many mental health rehab beds do we have between behavioral facility that the hospital has? And when you talk about the other one...
Vitality.
NAMS? Is that, is that the one at the Carson Health Center?
No. NAMS, for the record, Mary Walker, NAMS is the one up in Sparks.
Right.
So it's a state facility. It's really hard to get into.
Is that part of the regional process, too?
That is part of the process that we're talking about, as far as, there was a lot of disconnect at patients that, for example, were at Carson Tahoe Hospital ER, and that we couldn't get them transferred to NAMS. And there were various discussions. Sometime you would get somebody who'd say, well, you need this, this, and this. Someone else would come in and say, no, you need that, that, and that. So what's happening right now is there's coordination between NAMS and Carson Tahoe Hospital ER. There's also an opportunity, even at your jail, to potentially take those inmates, if we can get them into NAMS, they can go directly to NAMS and not through Carson Tahoe Hospital ER. Carson Tahoe Hospital ER, and Ed, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's, they have about, they did a study, and about five beds at their ER has been pretty much dedicated to mental health. So we need to get these people to the right area, and also detox. They're detoxing in the ER. So...
Right now, we only have detox facilities in this community with the facilities right above, on the second floor of Health and Human Services.
There's actually two places.
Yeah, and behavioral...
Behavior health, right.
Behavioral health. Any others, or where?
Before this process, we didn't have any detox beds above the health department.
Well, and Mary, I think the other thing of interest that you and I know, but not everybody knows, there's different levels of care for mental health. And NAMS, for example, it takes, I would say, the most severe cases, which are, you know, relatively the top of the pyramid, but they don't necessarily have enough beds, even for those. And so we're also looking at expansion of services across the various levels of mental health hospitalization and outpatient therapy.
I appreciate it. And Doc, I would love you, if you joined in, I do want to kind of close it out with this. Just this year, up at the hospital, we have opened up a community coalition that targets those that are most, and I apologize for the way I phrase it, most draining on service levels, those that are repeatedly...
High utilizers.
They're high utilizers. And it requires that if we're going to do something about it, that we communicate very, very effectively, and I think that has been Doc Joe's drive since the very beginning, that we create better lines of communications, much better streamlined the handoff between agencies and such. And I got to thank Becca Bach, sitting in the back, Ms. Becca Bach, and Deputy Dean Williams, who were out there contacting these folks away from our facilities, and making some sort of an effort to ensure that they stay somewhat stable. Doc?
For the record, Dr. Joe McCallister. Maybe I'll give you just a little bit of background. I get a lot of credit because I'm the one that everyone pushes up to the front, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the history, because it's really the boots on the ground that are doing the work, and it's really the agencies in this community, like Ronwood Family Resource, Carson Mental Health, Community Counseling Center, Vitality, that are doing all this work. So I only get credit because no one wants to talk. So in 2001, I was hired by the Sheriff's Department for six months to be the Director of Forensic Health Services, to design and implement treatment programs in the jail to address medical and mental health needs. We decided on six months, and we'd get back together to make sure it was a good fit. They never got back to me, and so it's been 14 years. Two years later, Douglas County retained my services to design the same program and to meet qualifications for their correctional healthcare system, their credential program there. In 2005, I met with Judge Tatro, the Public Defender's Office, and District Attorney's Office, to develop the Mental Health Court Team, which has now been in existence for 10 years. What we have known, and what you have probably heard over the course of many years, is jails have become the de facto mental health facilities of our country. And that's actually, you can find that reference going back at least 20 years. So we knew the jails are hubs for a lot of people with mental health issues. So about two years ago, Richard Whitley came to us, and he said, if you, right now, we have sort of a state-down system. At the state, we tell communities how to utilize monies, funding, staffing, to meet the mental health needs of the community. What if you customized something in Carson City? Would you do it differently? So Sheriff Furlong and I have implemented different programs over time, working with community agencies, and they've come and they've gone, and they've been funded and defunded. So we had some ideas pretty quickly about what we wanted to do. Because in addition to jails being the de facto mental health facilities, you also have heard about the silos of care, and how inefficient, when you have these islands of treatment in your community that exist and don't communicate outside their walls, you get tremendous redundancy, highly inefficient, and no one's communicating to each other. So the idea behind what Richard Whitley asked us to do a couple of years ago now, which ultimately led to a large grant, was break these silos apart and bring them to the jail. So now we, and redundancy has been a big thing, but not inefficient redundancy, but using people's expertise in a multitude of roles. So what we did is we have the agencies in the community that are providing services to our clients coming to the jail weekly, and developing treatment plans, strategies to implement while they're in custody, while developing a treatment plan that they can follow when they get out. When they leave the jail, they have appointments set. They know who their doctors will be, they know who their clinicians will be. The reason why they know who they will be, they're in the jail meeting them. So rapport is built with the inmates and the clients in the jail with the exact same people they're going to find in their offices at Carson Mental Health, at the Ronwood Family Resource Center, at Community Counseling Center. And then some of my staff in the jail go to their agencies, so we swap back. So my nurse, who is my prescribing nurse in the jail, goes to Carson Mental Health twice weekly to see patients there, most of which are our Mental Health Court clientele or our FAST clientele. The idea behind Mental Health Court is that it's a diversion program, and it's months after a person is arrested, and you have to plead guilty or be found guilty before you're allowed entry into the program. It's fantastic, but it's months down the road after they're incarcerated. FAST is something that occurs the day they hit the door of the jail. So we're supplying them treatment and identification and planning within the first 24 to 48 hours that they hit the jail. And so the FAST team is coming in and meeting with them and designing that. So that's kind of a global understanding of how we're sort of working within our agency by bringing the community inside and sending my staff to the outside agencies. And so you have Mary Bryant with Community Counseling Center, who's my individual therapist in the jail. She is also the coordinator for the Mental Health Court, and that's what I mean by redundancy. We're not replicating anything, but she's in a multitude of roles, so things don't slip through the cracks. Dave Ramsey, my nurse in the jail, is also the FAST team nurse, and he goes to Carson Mental Health twice weekly to prescribe meds and continue the care outside of the jail with the same inmates he was seeing in custody. Kathleen Basque, who's a case manager with Carson Mental Health, comes into the jail as part of the FAST team. She also works for Carson Mental Health, and she also consults to the Mental Health Court. So you can see, this large treatment team has a multitude of roles that really have helped us figure out how to manage this population in a much more streamlined and efficient way. And there's no splitting. The inmates see us, and they see us in this multitude of roles, so we're not playing against each other, which sometimes can happen. Ultimately, the emergency room heard about this program, and they reached out to us and said, what can we do in terms of FAST inside the emergency department? So what we did, the high utilizers, so we came together with the fire department, Carson Mental Health, the Sheriff's Department, Ronwood Family Resource, all these agencies in town, the same ones that come in and go, come in and out of the jail, are now at the table at the emergency department. We have 15 people that we identify and staff each month, and we create treatment plans. So at any point that fire department is called out to the home, or they're taken to the emergency department, or they show up on their own, or they come to the jail, we know what was supposed to be happening and what fell down, and then we correct it. So that team is immediately notified, so-and-so's back in custody, this is what happened, they missed their appointment with Carson Mental Health, so we know how to respond now. So that, I think, really fleshed out and rounded out this entire treatment package by bringing the emergency department in. So that gives you some sense and backdrop of how we do these things. And so the mobile outreach support team, you know, FAST is when you hit the jail door. So we decided, what can we do before they ever get there and prevent them from coming in? So the mobile outreach safety team, with Becca Bach, who won't talk, and Dean Williams back there, who will talk your ear off, but if he's allowed. So they're integral. So now we're not having, we're supplying services and outreach support on the streets, so they don't have to come in for misuse of 911. They don't have to come in for disorderly. They don't come in for a lot of these nuisance misdemeanor crimes that end up getting them trapped in the system at a very high cost. Jails and emergency rooms are the highest form, or the most expensive form of treatment you can supply. And so with JAS, now we're taking a step further. Let's hit them when they're juveniles. So let's go in with Ben Bianchi at the Juvenile Center and start working with them before they get and graduate into our program. Because Dave Ramsey, talk about, you know, redundancy, I guess, he's a juvenile. So he's seeing these juveniles before he comes to my jail every morning. So again, so he comes to the Mental Health Court teams in the afternoon on Thursdays to staff all our clients. And that's what I mean by all these different people playing different roles, even though they're hired by a particular agency. And it's weaving these different roles and expertises together that has really been useful. So I think I've hit most of the agencies in how this has been crafted over the last 14 years.
Doc Joe, the grant that you mentioned for the Regional Mental Health Coordinator, how long will that grant fund that position, and what are your thoughts on future funding when that grant runs out?
I probably wasn't clear. So the most recent development we have is this Regional Healthcare Coordinator, which is Jessica Flood from Carson Tahoe Hospital. I have set up FAST in Carson, and in Douglas, and now in Lyon County. We're also going to do a pilot Mental Health Court program in Fernley, out of Lyon County, and we're going to set up a mobile outreach support team in Lyon County. So I'm in the process of getting that accomplished. The Regional Mental Health Coordinator, or Behavioral Health Coordinator, is now going to manage these three major population centers to make sure there's some standardization in the way we deliver services, and that there's coordination of care. Because most of, not most, some of our clients are crossing these boundaries, so we know them through Douglas and Carson and Lyon. So by having this one hub person identified as a Behavioral Health Coordinator, she will be organizing these three large population centers where I developed FAST as in program. So that's going to be largely her role. The grant I was talking about was for the FAST team, which, once we set up FAST, I think we were running for about a year, which, when we applied for the grant, we made the top five. They won't tell you where in the top five. Could have been number five, could have been one. But because we had a program already operating that was successful. So we got a $250,000 grant over the course of two years. It's a federal grant. It's due to run out probably in this fall. So we've applied for an extension grant. It's not at the same level of operating, so we're going to have to figure out some unique ways around that. But at the end of the day, we hope it will continue for at least another year at this point, and Kathy Bartosz has been absolutely central to making that happen.
For the record, Mary Walker, and just to...
For the record, Mary Walker, and just to add to Mr. Bonkowski's question, the regional mental health coordinator, when the grant is starting this fiscal year to Carson Tahoe Hospital, it's about an $80,000 a year grant, and at this point, it's a year-to-year. And I think there's a commitment to the state that there, it would be assistance and ongoing funding. Washoe County has the same thing. So, there hasn't really been discussion that it's, we're only gonna have this for one year and not have it in the future. So, that's been the general discussion at this point.
Other questions? Do you appreciate the efforts? I know the sheriff appreciates it. He doesn't have to fuss so much. Thank you very much. Item C. I'd like to invite Ed Epperson and Rita Shepherd and Mary Jane Ostrander to the table to discuss the community coalition. The material to accompany this was sent out electronically.
Hi, my name is Rita Shepherd. I'm the manager for case management over at Carson Tahoe Hospital.
Mary Jane Ostrander with Carson City Health and Human Services, the Human Services Division Manager.
And again, Ed Epperson, CEO of Carson Tahoe Health. But I think, Rita, you're going to lead this presentation, if that's all right.
So, I wanted to give a background. I'm Sheriff Furlong, and Dr. Joe already mentioned the collaboration, our, with the hospital and the sheriff. It originally started last year, we hired a transitional care nurse who was looking at frequent ER visits of certain patients, and we had care plans done at the hospital. And it just didn't seem to work because the patients were, you know, we treated them in a certain way. They went back out to the community, and then they came back in. So, this was originally started by the couple of ER doctors who were really frustrated about certain patients who were just coming back. And in January of this year, we decided to invite the sheriff, the Carson Fire, Health and Human Services, Fish, Ronwood, FAST, Most, everybody who wanted to join. We are meeting once a month. And in my presentation here, there's the graph that shows our progress already with certain individuals. We found out that certain people didn't always tell us the truth, and so, we would arrange for certain things in the discharge, and found out that, yes, it's this. And, yes, and there's an example of a patient experience for one person who I tracked down, who, from last fall, he had eight visits in the ER a month. And as of this year, end of June, he's been out of the hospital 45 days. And that's because of Health and Human Services, because of Ronwood Services, everybody. So, it's been like extremely successful, just like Sheriff Furlong and Joe said, this collaboration with the community and dealing, I mean, my own, this project only included six people of the most, most frequent flyers. And it's just an example, but like Dr. Joe said, we have a spreadsheet, and all of the people who are participating in this can put their input, and we can look at it and say, oh, this person is in jail, or this person is in the hospital. And we can all give the same message to the person and say, we all are on the same table here. We're trying to help you. We're trying to make things work. So, that's basically the background, and it's continuing, and it's been very fruitful. So, thank you, all of you who have been participating in this group. And Mary Jane will take over.
So, I just wanna tag on and just kinda give the city's perspective, or at least our division's perspective. I think the coalition is well-represented here also, with the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Services, the Fire Department, Dr. Joe. And I just wanted to kind of, since it's kind of been explained to you already, I could just scratch my whole first page. No, but, you know, referring back to Rita's ER visit handout, when you look at those numbers, of course, keep in mind, it's the city's emergency medical services that have probably transported these people to the ER. So, that's how it kind of staggers as far as the frequency of services everywhere. In addition, you know, I didn't get everybody's numbers, but patient six up there also had 58 visits to the jail since the, since 2002 is what I was told. So, so, this is what we're looking at. This is who we're identifying as the most vulnerable. With the coalition being able to identify these vulnerable individuals, we're able to start identifying the past services that have failed, and propose options that are available, and come together, again, as, not as individual silos, but as one unit, and do a shared case plan. So, everybody's consistent in presenting the case plan to the individual, with the goal, of course, to eliminate or substantially decrease the use of the emergency services at the ER, with the Fire Department, with the Sheriff's Department, et cetera. The part that we play in it is for the homeless individuals, which there's, there's a high percentage of them that are on this list. And we do have the housing grants, as you know. And under the housing first model, we can provide the permanent housing and to the individual as they're being, or before they're being discharged, and begin to assist those individuals with the follow-up that has been presented to them with the other resources, getting them the medical appointments, following through those medications, whatever is needed there. Again, using the example that Rita had on this individual, he was identified by the team as one of the top two. And we first started working with the hospital on him, probably between like number six and seven on this chart. He, and while we were talking to him, he was already in the hospital. So, our discharge plan was, here's our housing program. This is what we can do. You know, you need to call us now. He, before discharge, they, he ended up going to a treatment center, didn't work out, out again, back in the hospital again. And eventually, you know, we kept our door open. It's still here. It's still here for you. He was discharged. The hospital was gracious and was able to give him a month in the motel upon discharge. And, you know, there's, there's medical equipment that needs the power to run, to keep him healthy. And so, while that transition was taking place, we were able to process the permanent housing, get him in permanent housing. He's been in permanent housing since May. He's established primary care with Nevada Health Centers. He's utilizing the food pantries. He's following through the medical tests, referrals, and he's made tremendous positive steps on his sobriety. He's applying for social security disability with our assistance and following through on what's all entailed with that. And so, this is how it's supposed to work. This is how it all comes together. I wanted to touch on some of the barriers that, you know, we run into as the coalition that we've worked through. You know, each of the, each of the coalition members, of course, are learning more about each other's services. We always seem to know just a little bit, but not all the details. So, you know, we're learning more about, and then how we can tweak this or tweak that and make it work. You know, some agencies, because of past behaviors on these people, have, have, for lack of a better word, sanctioned them from being able to provide services. As the coalition, you know, we've agreed, clean slate. The coalition has identified these people, give them a clean slate, and let's, let's make it work. So, we've worked through that, and that's great. Some of the barriers that we do have is, you know, available rental properties. Some of these people have burned bridges, and it's tough. It's tough to talk, to take a landlord and try to talk them into something. But, and of course, we can't make someone do something they don't want to. What we could do is offer them all the information they need, keep repeating it to them, keep the door open, and just kind of for ourselves, know at the end of the day, we've done all we could. So, that's our perspective.
Mary Jane, how many total patients has the coalition identified approximately? And realistically, how many patients can the program be expanded to handle?
We have 15 that are identified on the spreadsheet that people are watching. And as it goes, you know, people will come up on the list, and people will go down on the list, depending on the crisis or where they're at. And that can happen very quickly. So, there are about 15 of them on there, and that's not to say we couldn't add more on the list. As far as our, from our perspective, as far as housing and everything, we took the top one. We're still working on it. You know, again, we can't make somebody do something they don't want to. And we took the second one for housing. We, for my housing program, we could potentially take two or three more. Of course, my case manager's sitting behind me, so he's probably throwing daggers at me, but, but, you know, because they are. They're very high maintenance. They take a lot of time. But...
That may be the case, but when you look at the statistics and the relief on our emergency services transport, the room in the jail, all the cost benefits, plus the benefit to the patients themselves, I mean, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. Are there also components of the total programming that can be applied to patients that have a lesser need? So, right now, you're working with the highest utilizers with the most intense treatment. But can you adapt this as you move down that scale and take components of it that would help at a lower level as well?
Absolutely. Rita's transitional case manager calls us on a regular basis, just about different needs of the different patients, and we try to coordinate what we know and what we can find out for that person. And, you know, at times, it could be a bus ticket home. You know, they're stranded, they can't get home, and they're getting ready to be discharged. And so, we've coordinated, you know, a Greyhound bus ticket to get them home. The hospital's been gracious as far as getting them to the Greyhound depot, and it's done. So, yeah, you know, I mean, I'm willing to work on anything.
Mary Jane, all of you, and I really appreciate everything you're doing. This really was designed to focus in on those highest needs. And a lot of those lower ones are being visited or handled outside of facilities. And I go back to Becca Bach and Deputy Williams, who were seeing those lower needs, day-to-day maintenance, if you will, at home, instead of in the emergency rooms or in the jails. But there was real strong focus right from the beginning. How many of these highest needs can you handle and still be effective? And I applaud that it, that it's as high as 15. That's, that's, that's a lot of work. And I love the illustration up on the screen, because that, that says the entire story right there.
Well, we have Mr. Epperson there, and his board back there. Let me just follow up on what Brad Bonkowski just said, and thank you and the hospital for, and the coalition for what you're doing. I think, you know, when I look out over the audience here, we're fortunate to have such, one, excellent services, but two, the coordination that's happening between the various different players in this arena. And I know, you know, necessarily hasn't always been that way, but I'm, when I look here, I can't tell you how proud I am to see everybody working together, see the boards working together. And I think it's just, Ed, I think it speaks to your leadership and your board's leadership, and so I'd like to, I'd like to thank you. And while I have you there, again, I'd like to say, you know what, you put that human anatomy exhibit at the Children's Museum in Reno? That is fantastic. I mean, that will pay dividends, not today, not tomorrow, but next week. I mean, that's a big deal. So, congratulations to you, and thanks to your board for being here today.
I appreciate those comments a lot. I wanted to just take a brief mention of something at least I spend a lot of time thinking about and talking about, and so does our board. And again, you have most of the hospital board here, is throughout this, you may have read, we've had quite a change in our healthcare system the last few years, has been changed everything. And one of my frustrations all this time has been, let me back up. There's nobody I know who doesn't agree that healthcare costs are out of control, they're unsustainable. It's got to change. What never, until today, there today's an exemption, exception gets talked about, is how much of healthcare cost is social. It has nothing to do with medical treatment. Guaranteed correct, if I'm wrong, Rita, right now, there's some number of people in beds in the hospital that have no reason to be there other than a social problem that we have to solve. So, what we're talking about here gets at that, and we're lucky to be able to do that together. So, you know, that's, that's the big problem to solve, is the healthcare, that's really not healthcare at all. It's social issues, whether it's mental health, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Mr. Shreans, will you come tell us about the fancy new technology you got?
Hi, for the record, Bob Shreans, Fire Chief. Real quick, some of you guys have heard this before, but last year, we ended up getting some grants and some funds from the city, and we bought some news old monitors. And also, we just got another one. So, all of our first-out rigs are now equipped with the newest and latest technology. And we also equipped all of our rigs with mobile Wi-Fi. And we just went out and bought all new iPads. So, we are now going to move to all mobile technology wireless systems for all of our healthcare, which is nice for us, because we've been doing stuff with paper, which is, we've been trying to get rid of in the dark ages, and we're still there. So, what happens for patients for us now, if, I'll pick on the sheriff, he has a heart attack right now. We can walk in with our 12-lead EKG, and there you go. So, we can hook him up, hook up the 12-lead EKG. We can transmit that EKG now to the emergency room, confer with the docs, and we can bypass the ER and go directly to the cath lab. So, that really saves, you know, heart muscle, saves patient time, it's patient care, and it's the most advanced systems that we have. Just the other day, we did it, three days ago, from a guy who was in a cardiac arrest, bypassed the ER, went directly into the cath lab, and the guy's gonna walk out of the ER. So, out of the hospital. So, that's the kind of stuff that's happening, and that's what's going on. Some of the holdups we do have, though, is on our electronic EPCR, which is a patient care reporting. It's not us. It's not a hardware. We're having a software issue. The software vendors pulled it because they were having some issues. So, we will have that hopefully up and running here within a month or two. But some of our, on that particular entity, that's a software problem, not hardware. But as far as the fire department, and the paramedics, and EMS, and the city, we are top technology that's out there up today. So, thank you for all your help.
So, you can eat another donut, sir.
Have another cigarette.
That was, that was low-hanging fruit there, yeah. Thank you. Angela Baroso and Jim Fried, and I believe Tom Trulli, perhaps? Where is Tom? Yep, there you go. Or his look-alike will come up and tell us about some planning that has been going on.
Hi, Angela Baroso, Public Health Preparedness Manager for Carson City Health.
Hi, I'm Jim Fried. I'm the emergency manager planner for Carson Tahoe Regional Medical Center.
And for the record, Bob Shreans, Fire Chief.
So, we wanted to just give you a brief overview in a, in Ebola exercise that we conducted as a group. It's a collaborative exercise in February. Just to let you know, this is a revised or updated presentation that's different from the one that you originally got in your packet. So, the players in this exercise included Carson City Fire, EMS, the Health Department, oh, thank you, Sheriff's Dispatch, and the Carson Tahoe Health System. And it was a full-scale exercise, meaning that we actually practiced. It wasn't just a tabletop, on how each partner would identify and treat a suspect Ebola patient. We had very... We had various goals for this particular exercise, a lot of it had to do with EMS. Did you want to talk about?
Sure. One of the things that we do for, obviously, at the full swing of the Ebola, everything was, and then they, you always think, oh, it's not going to happen to us, but then it happened in Dallas, so we know that those issues are there. So, our departments prepared for those types of issues, and we had this drill. So, what we did was, we were looking at how our folks are going to respond and how they're going to act, because we really didn't tell them a whole lot what was going on. It was a blind drill. And it was just a dispatch that said, hey, we want you to go to this, this house, this call. And based on the information that dispatch is supposed to ask, patient coming out sick, coming out of the country, all the triggers that we're going to implement, and then we had our battalion chief show up, and that started the process. And then, when the guys showed up, they have an option of how they're going, which equipment to pull, which ones they aren't going to use, and that kind of stuff. We wanted to see how they would do without prompting them. And they did pretty well, actually. So, there are some things, and we'll go over what they could do better, but for the most part, we're well-prepared now, and we have those options already in place, so.
So, as the chief said, so those goals were to make sure that EMS personnel had the proper training and the proper equipment, including the personal protective equipment, that the Sheriff's Dispatch had the information they needed to dispatch properly, and they were asking the right questions, and that for the health, the hospital actually was able to protect the health of their staff and the public that was coming in. And for Carson City Health, it was mainly on the epidemiology, its surveillance area that we needed to practice. Did you want to?
Sure. In preparation of the drill, we reviewed our infectious disease response plan. We did training. Dallas quickly figured out that they needed to in-service their staff on proper donning and doffing. I'm sure you all saw reports in the media. Not only did we do training for proper PPE donning and doffing review with all staff, we developed an infectious response emergency team, nine members of the hospital, that stepped up voluntarily to go above and beyond and learn Level Two, Level Three PPE for infectious disease, meet quarterly to review proper donning and doffing of that, and then meet as needed to discuss any new infectious disease or concerns in the community. So, we developed an infectious disease response team, we revised our infectious disease response plan, we did staff training, we ensured that we had the right survey questions, that our ER staff were trained on not only what questions to ask, but who to notify if the person happened to answer yes to those questions. So, we did, we did a lot of preparation beforehand, but then, then when the drill came, it was kind of a blind drill for our staff to see how well did the preparation that we took and the training that we took serve our hospital and our community.
So, just briefly to take you through the scenario, the Sheriff's Dispatch received a call from a wife that her husband was severely ill in the last 24 hours and had the symptoms that would, could be Ebola-like. Dispatch did ask the proper travel questions, and so they sent an ambulance, but then called the battalion chief offline so that the information would not go out on the public radio. On, on scene, when the paramedics arrived, they did suit up properly, they took a patient history and his vitals, and they masked the patient and the wife. They also put a gown on her, and they transported them both to the hospital in an ambulance. And that basically was a safety procedure in order to make sure that the wife had, because she had been exposed, was not going to drive in her own car and walk through the ER, basically. So, once they arrived at Carson Tahoe, they were, they got notification that a patient was going to arrive, and so they prepared the ER for the arrival of that patient. And if you can see some of the photos there, Jim can tell you what they did to set up.
So, we needed to set up an isolation ward for this kind of a patient, and we selected a small part of our emergency room that has five beds that are in a private area, and we, with Vis Queen, were able to isolate that ward so that nobody can go in or out, at least they go in through a security entrance. So, our facilities team installed the Vis Queen and the barriers to funnel traffic in and out through one, one entrance that security checked and made sure that staff were trained and needed to be there, so we could control the crowd. And then, the center picture, you see actually some of the staff in PPE, getting ready to receive the patient.
So, the hospital then continued to set up their hospital incident command system, or their command center. And then, the hospital lab staff actually was included in this exercise, and they performed a CBC count, or complete blood count, for the Ebola patient. You'll see them in there, and also in their PPE. And I thought the other thing that was good is that they had cleared a corridor for the delivery of the samples to the lab without contaminating the rest of the hospital. So, when the infectious disease team was ready, as you can see, that's the type of PPE that they have to wear. It's full suits, it's some kind of purified air respirator, so those are pappers that they have on there, and it's to protect them, as well as the other people in the area and the patient. So, when the ambulance team waited in the bay, basically, until they got word from the ER staff that they're ready to take them, and so then they were wheeled through in a secure area, basically, into a patient room, into the containment area. And then, basically, that was the end of play at that point, that we got that far. And so, we did have a, participated in the debriefing with the hospital, and we're happy to say the patient survived. As you see, Chief Turley was agreed to be our patient, and he's still here today. Well, that's right, really. He was here.
So, can I just clarify? Are you saying that it was a blind test throughout the entire process, so the hospital didn't know it was going to receive a potential Ebola patient, and you built that Vis Queen and did all of that in three minutes? Or did I?
So, in preparation, we talked about what do we need to do in order to develop the isolation ward. We had an entire committee sitting together at the hospital, saying, what do we need to do to prepare for Ebola? And definitely, all of the plans for the Vis Queen and our response were developed way in advance. But the drill, our part of the drills, we wanted to test how well will those plans actually work. One of the lessons that we learned that I probably don't think we have on the slide with the Vis Queen, was that we taped up all our Vis Queen and then realized we needed to get our x-ray machine, a portable x-ray machine that was going to be dedicated to the patient, into the room, right? So, you know, really, we learned quite a few things, but, I mean, you would think it's perfectly reasonable that you'd do that in advance, right? But we were trying to race the clock, because you've got patients sitting in ambulance, waiting for isolation ward to be set up. So, we're racing the clock, trying to get everything done, and then we get our Vis Queen up, and went, ooh, I guess we need to get our x-ray machine in the room first. So, we, definitely, we did a lot of planning, a lot of work, a lot of training before we ran the drill, but we tried to keep the date and time of the drill. They knew a drill was coming, they knew we were preparing for this, but they didn't know exactly when or...
And then, just to briefly go over some of the things to add to what went well, is the EMS personnel had received the proper education and training, and so they did have, they knew to put on the appropriate PPE and followed their protocols. Dispatch did a good job of following their protocols and asking the right questions. And once they asked the travel question, heard that that patient had been in Africa, they went to the proper card on infectious disease. And so, that's why they were able to give EMS the heads-up, basically, of what was happening. The battalion chief arrived on scene and promptly called the Health Department and the hospital, let them know what was happening. And again, we wanted that to be basically through landlines or through cellphones and not actually go through the radio system. The infection control at the hospital also notified our epidemiologist what was happening, so that he could follow up and do the things that he needed to do. Basically, that was to notify the state epidemiologist. We are required to do that in any kind of serious infectious disease event like that. And then, he also called the state lab to let them know that there was going to be a sample that they were going to have to help package and send to the CDC, because the CDC was the only one who could confirm an actual Ebola case. EMS and the hospital also established their unified command during, before and during transfer of the patient. The hospital set up their emergency operations center quickly and stayed in communications with the emergency department and the lab, and they followed all protocols in protecting their staff and the other people in the hospital. What could we have, you know, done better? Of course, there's always going to be things like that. We all had plans that we had never tested before, and of course, even though we generally have some kind of mass illness or infectious disease plan, we never had anything that was this serious. And so, even the CDC was calling us serious infectious disease. And so, some of the things that we learned, do you want to go with anything, Bob? We have, about evaluating your PPE.
Yeah, some of the things that we've done is, we had two, we have two separate sets of PPE on the rigs, and they grab the basic, normal protection for just your basic standard disease control, for communicable disease. Where we have, the new suits are all Tyvek with hoods and everything else, they sit side by side, they just grab, basically grab the wrong ones. They're still protected, however, we have more protection, especially if it's a, truly isn't Ebola issue, then it's a skin contact with fluids. The best thing they did is they put the mask on the patient, and that eliminates a lot of any issues that you have. So, that was good. The other thing is, the important safety solutions for the ambulance decontamination, we know that we actually get a case like that, our ambulance is going to be out of service for a long time. There are, there is some new equipment that is out there. If we can ever be able to purchase some new ambulances, they'll come with infrared that actually kills all the bugs in the back of the rigs, so that can actually go back into service, so that will help. And the other thing, too, is the ambulance needs to be staged, so instead of pulling into the bay and waiting, we'll just stage on the street and say, hey, we're here, because as the other rescues come in, or if there's any rumor, or there's any, if somebody hears about a case, it's going to be chaos anyway. So, we're going to try to eliminate all those types of fears and hold those rigs until everybody's ready, and then just walk them through and make sure that we can, if the press is there and that kind of stuff, we can, we can control that. So, that's some of the stuff that we learned from that particular event.
And I think for Carson Tahoe, they found in their command center that they did need some equipment within the room that they were meeting in, which was a copy fax printer, because they had to keep leaving the room to actually access those services. And I want to just mention quickly, too, that I think you've all approved our requests for, applying for supplemental Ebola funding. We do have that opportunity from the Division of Public and Behavioral Health, the state agency that funds us, and so we'll be getting a CDC-sponsored grant that will help us purchase some of this PPE for EMS. And then, there'd be one through the hospital preparedness program that will also help with some of these supplies for the hospital. And hopefully, that will be here by October. And then, do you want to go on? This is hospital stuff.
I thought it was, overall, was a wonderful experience to be able to drill not only with the hospital, but work hand-in-hand with Carson Fire and Carson City Health and Human Services. I think we learned a lot on how to communicate with each other. We were able to face us the names, and in a hot wash, Carson City Fire said, you guys need any help with your command center? You have any questions? Just give us a call, we will be happy to answer any questions you have. We have a command center set up, we have computers in a, basically, a training room is its primary job, but our secondary job is to be a command center. At one time, had a fax copier printer in the room. They didn't think it was really necessary for the training purposes, but they didn't think about, well, what about if when we stand it up for a command center? And when we stood it up for a command center, whoop, there it wasn't. So, we were able to, you know, use another printer, but in an emergency, you want to be able to stand up as quickly as possible, so you kind of need to have those things on standby, ready to go. So, that was definitely one of the things we learned. Communication's always a challenge. We learned that if the city's going to set up its command center, we need to get a liaison person over to the command center as quickly as possible, so that we can communicate our needs from the hospital, and if command center has any questions, our liaison person can help facilitate getting those answers. So, I think all in all, it was a good experience, and we, it was a valuable drill, and we had a lot of lessons that we learned from it. Thank you. IDIR is Emergency Infectious Disease Emergency Response Team. It's just an acronym for the nine hospital members that volunteered to be the resource people, the leaders that know Level One, Two, Three PPE, when you need each type of those, those levels. An Ebola patient is not as infectious when they originally start developing a fever than as they start having nausea, vomiting, emesis. So, as their symptoms progress, they become more and more infectious, because they start emitting more and more of the virus. So, a person who only has a fever, but doesn't have other symptoms, but has a travel history, isn't as high of a risk for contacting, spreading the illness than somebody that has all the symptoms of Ebola. So, the IDIR team will help make the decisions on what level of PPE we need to immediately start with, and then, when do we progress into Level Two and Three PPE?
Those are hospital employees?
Hospital employees, yeah. The leader of the IDIR team is our hospital epidemiologist, Doris Demmett. She's on vacation, she wasn't able to be here today, but she's a leader of our IDIR team. Our IDIR team consists of management and staff-level personnel that have, again, volunteered to make the commitment to stay up to date with CDC recommendations and continuing education and practice quarterly on donning and doffing, so that we are ready to help staff in the event that we have a serious infectious disease present to the hospital.
Jim or Angela, will there be follow-up trials?
Yes. So, basically, anytime we do an exercise like this and the lessons learned, we also do write what they call an after-action report and an improvement plan. And so, then, in our improvement plan are a lot of the things that you saw here that might have gone better, and so we will have to address those. And then, part of the funding that we did receive from the hospital preparedness program is a small amount over five years, and each year, we are required to do a unannounced drill, just like we did on this one. So, we will be doing that yearly.
And then, I had another question on, as an example, the Vis Queen. Do you just happen to have Vis Queen laying around, or is that because of the training, was it available? Or is there, as part of this program, you have a staging room or an emergency response room where these materials are kept? Because it just seems strange that you'd have a roll of Vis Queen laying around the hospital.
That's a good question. I learned more about Vis Queen with Ebola than a lot of my other things. There's actually fire-rated Vis Queen that will burn slower and is less flammable, and is designed to be put up for barriers during construction. So, we had to purchase fire-rated Vis Queen. They make zippers, like Velcro zippers, and containment things that you can zip up and down, so you can actually move equipment in. For this drill, we just wanted to practice putting up the Vis Queen and taking it down, so we actually used the Home Depot version Vis Queen. It was only up for probably a period of an hour. But in a cart, we have the fire-rated Vis Queen that we actually went out and purchased specifically for that, the tape that we need, the zippers that we need. There's actually pulls, support pulls that help hold the Vis Queen up. There's a cart that's labeled in facilities for setting up the isolation ward. So, we purchased all that stuff in advance, and we even, you know, had facilities play with it, because the first time you set it up is not when you're having a drill. So, like I said, there was a lot of preparation that went involved with this, but they didn't know when or where, you know, pretty much people expected we've got to drill it. But, yeah, there's fire-rated Vis Queen, we did have to purchase that separately and put it on a cart, and we have it on standby just in case.
Any more? Go talk.
For any of you, this really is an Ebola exercise. But if you don't mind, could you just comment on the broader benefits of this for infectious diseases of many more different styles?
You're right. And actually, when we, even though we did kind of develop what we called a, Ebola is a viral hemorrhagic fever, there's about, there's many of them, there's five that we actually sort of deal with. We did develop viral hemorrhagic fever guidelines, but really, the planning that we've all done is for infectious disease. It may be a more serious infectious disease, and so really, the Ebola planning that we do will kind of really just be an appendix to what our overall plans are for any kind of infectious disease. It just means that we need to step it up a level or two when we're dealing with something like this. And that's also because, you know, we have a lot of requirements to report to the state. The state has requirements to let the CDC know when things like this happen, whereas there are some infectious diseases that we just handle during our regular course of business that would not require us to do all of this. You want to add? Do you want to add?
Good. I think the community is breathing easier now. It's like, okay, if I go to Africa, I'm safe. Coming back home.
Right, Visqueen.
By the right, Visqueen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Nikki, would you like to tell us about the annual report from Carson City Health and Human Services, please?
Thank you, Dr. Pintar. So I'm just going to give you a brief preview. This will be our third annual, annual report. And we are responding to the citizens and others, and we are going green this year. So the annual report will be available on our website in August, and that is www.gethealthycarsoncity.org. And if you, Board of Health, and the citizens haven't gone on there lately, get on there. It's new. We have a new website design on there. When this report comes out, we will make announcements on the website, on Facebook, and of course, in the newspaper, in our weekly article. And as in the past, all five divisions will be featured, the Clinical Services, Disease Prevention and Control, which includes epidemiology and environmental health, the Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion, Public Health Preparedness, which you just heard a lot about, Human Services. We'll also have our Funding Overview and Essential Services. So some of, a few of our 2014 highlights include our partnership with the Nevada Humane Society. And also, Carson City Health and Human Services was awarded a Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly Business Status by the League of American Bicycleists Bicycle Friendly America Program. And this is an important demonstration of our commitment to promoting safety and accessibility for cyclists in our community. And this is in addition to the award that the city had received. Our Facebook page, we reached the 1,000 likes milestone. So from December 2013 to December 2014, we saw a 54.35% increase in our likes. So we're still encouraging people to like us on our Facebook page. Some of the response events that we are highlighting in February 2014, we have our rabies incident that we investigated 47 potential human exposures, of which eight individuals received post-exposure treatment. We, you heard a lot about the Ebola, but, you know, we had our first case of Ebola virus here in the United States, and we respond to that. We are getting prepared, as you just heard. Clinical Services saw a combination of 7,620 unduplicated clients for a total of 13,404 encounters in Carson City and Douglas County. Environmental Health staff conducted 547 routine inspections of the permitted food establishments in Carson City. And our WIC program, Women's Infants and Children program, served 12,587 participants through benefits, nutrition education, and breastfeeding support. And in 2014, the Health Department was operated on 58% grant funding. So that's just some highlights. And once that comes out, visit it and check it out.
It will be tested?
Mm-hmm.
At the next Board of Health.
Yes, he will. He'll be sitting in timeout again after that. Thank you. Any questions for Nikki? Thank you. Where are we?
Gee.
Oh, gee. Valerie Coape will tell us a little bit about our status for national accreditation.
Hello. For the record, Valerie Coape, Carson City Health and Human Services, Public Health Program Specialist. The hat I'm wearing today is as our accreditation coordinator. I've been asked to give a little bit more background as to the accreditation process because we do have some new faces in the room today, and just make sure that we are kind of on the same page in understanding why we're going through the accreditation process, so that when I get to the part where we are, it makes a little bit more sense. So what is public health accreditation? The Public Health Accreditation Program was released by the Public Health Accreditation Board, which is also known as FAB, so if I use the acronym FAB, that's what I'm talking about, in August of 2011. There are 12 different domains, which are areas of public health practice that we are measured against. The first 10 coordinate with the 10 essential services of public health, and then the remaining two involve public health management and government, or governance, rather.
That's you, Nikki.
That's you guys. As of right now, there are 75 accredited health departments in the nation. There are also an additional 254 more involved in some process of that accreditation process. We are one of those 254. There are currently only eight state-level accredited, 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 there we go, accredited organizations. The remaining are all actually local-level health departments. All right. So why are we applying? First of all, we want to ensure that we are meeting national, national-level standards of high-quality services and programming, so that we are providing for our community. Additionally, as I've mentioned before, although public health accreditation is a voluntary program, many organizations, including the CDC, have aligned a lot of their grant deliverables and other expectations with the accreditation standards and measures. So given that we are a highly grant-funded organization, we can't really afford not to. Where are we in the process? So things that we've already completed. We were a beta test site in 2010. We completed our Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan, our CHIP and our CHAW, in 2012, and our first agency strategic plan in 2013. We submitted our statement of intent also in 2013, resulting in our submission of our application in spring of 2014. That spring, myself and another staff member attended the EFAV training so that we were aware of how the FAB documentation upload system worked and got a little bit more guidance as to exactly what they were looking for in the documentation. And then we submitted our documentation this last May. After we submitted our documentation, there was a FAB staff member who was assigned to us when we originally submitted our application in 2014. Her name is Jennifer. She's called an accreditation specialist. And she completed a completeness review of our documentation, just to make sure that there were no major gaps, areas where we forgot to upload documentation. Don't worry, that didn't happen. Or if there were any other major questions that were resulting from our documentation. We did have a couple of questions that they had from the completeness review. It was mostly whether or not the documentation that we submitted was in line with the public health areas of practice that are accepted by FAB. They get a little bit picky about that sort of thing. So we were able to resubmit any sort of narrative and a couple items of documentation. Actually, today, we closed that part out. So we're excited to have one more thing off of our plate. And where we are now, we are going to be working with our accreditation specialist, the FAB staff member, to schedule our site visit, hopefully for sometime late fall or early winter. We have been assigned a site visit team. These are all volunteers from other organizations. They are not FAB staff members, per se. There is one person who is from Washington State, one person from the Colorado State Health Department, and another person who is a program manager at the Nevada County Health Department in California. So we have kind of an interesting mixture of people coming to visit us.
Okay, but don't.
No, we're not allowed to do that. We will, however, at the site visit, have an opportunity to give an orientation presentation to give them a little bit more background about our organization. Over the next few months, they will be reviewing our documentation, but the site visit will be the only time that they actually have a chance to interact with us directly. All other questions that they may have about us or our documentation will be directed through the accreditation specialist in the meantime, and also thereafter. So in the next few months, we are going to be holding some trainings for the Board of Health members, also our community partners, which will hopefully also include some hospital staff as well. And we are also starting the planning stages for our next community health assessment, which needs to be completed, it has to be completed by 2017. However, if that was to be done earlier than that, that would be okay as well. Are there any other questions about where we are?
I think, Valerie, that one of the things that has been bandied about is perhaps conducting the community health assessment in close concert with the hospital, if I'm not mistaken. Because there are, and Ed, you can speak to that, there are requirements that the hospital has for doing a similar sort of, sort of assessment. And they do dovetail nicely. So hopefully, we can work together.
And we would love to work very closely with the hospital through our next community health assessment process, if that would work for them as well.
And that's kind of within our next agenda item, too, is to talk just briefly about that. Any other questions for me?
We have a lot of energy for 5:30 at night.
I have had so much coffee today.
Well, I think having that one last project go and successfully boosts the energy level, definitely. Thank you, Valerie. And then our final item of information before public comment will be, we have a brief discussion from representatives of a variety of agencies from Carson City Fire, the Health and Human Services, Carson City Hospital, to talk about a couple of the other projects that are being worked on together.
And if I can just start that, just since we talked about the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan, as Valerie alluded to, we're going to be looking to update ours, as the hospital is going to be looking to update theirs. They need to do theirs every three years. And so Ed and I have already briefly discussed how possibly we can collaborate on this and perform this assessment together. So Ed, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, one of the requirements that came along with the Affordable Care Act is that nonprofit hospitals will conduct a community health needs assessment every three years. Well, as that was passed, we were fortunate that we'd already scheduled ours for that particular year. So by coincidence, we qualify right off the bat. But we will be due, I believe it's next year. Don Haddaway is our hospital board chair, but he had to leave because we have a, we're about to start our Finance and Strategy Committee. So I can be here as long as you want me to be.
Drag it up, hey?
Yeah. So we are due, I'm pretty sure it's next year for what would be our third one under the act. So we've had Marina Works has been on our community benefit committee for at least a couple of years as part of that conversation about, here's what our needs assessment is showing, what is this public health needs assessment showing, and how do we dovetail that. So it makes, to me, a whole lot of sense, because what I've learned from Marina's reports, there's a lot of, of course, a lot of similarity. So it seems to me we could save some money and get the same information together next year.
What else, go, Doc?
Okay. Well, we'll be quick. I mean, you want to be out of here at 5:30. We almost made it. So some of the things for where the fire department's going, okay, is obviously we have mobile integrated health, and we have community paramedicine. And you heard a little bit today about the community stuff that we're doing for all of our patients, but now we're looking at community paramedicine. So we'll be coming to you, I will be coming to you later, but what we're trying to do is create a new system where we're going to actually do some healthcare out in the field, where we'll have, we'll set up with the Health and Human Services, we'll pick a day where not only we're the RAM program, but we can do it once a month and say, you know, we'll have the folks who are there, take your blood pressure, look at your medications, make sure you're doing the right stuff for your particular problems and issues that you have and your healthcare. Secondarily, we're looking at new ways of not transporting to the ER, which brings down his ER costs. So what we can do with that is with the new technology that we have, we can actually now, we can FaceTime their private docs. So let's say, for instance, I'll pick on the sheriff again. He doesn't take his heart meds. So he calls 911 again, and we go to his house and says, look, it's only, you're not really having chest pain, you're just having anxiety, so you don't need to go to the hospital, but we're going to contact your doc just to make sure. We can FaceTime the doc. He looks at the patient with the iPads, go, yeah, you're fine. Stay there till tomorrow, take a cab, we're good to go. It stops their treatment to the ER, and we don't have to transport them. So it saves time, money, and energy on everybody. The other thing we're working with the hospital now, and even with the Health Department, is one of the things about Medicaid is that most patients, when they come to the ER, a lot of folks who don't have insurance are eligible for Medicaid. Well, they're not being signed up right away. So we're working together to figure out, how do we sign these folks up? And we even talked about the guys in the jail, that if you don't have medical insurance, why aren't you on Medicaid? Because Medicaid instantly pays for like the processes that start from that point forward, up to about 30 days. So that, for us, it would include the ambulance bill, the emergency room department, and even at the Sheriff's Department, some of their healthcare needs. So we're working on trying to figure out a way to get that taken care of where these guys are signed up for Medicaid. And then finally, we'll get you out of here. The last thing we're working with is the hospital's on the integrated health side, and he brought up Obamacare. And one of the things that the hospitals have is they have a Medicare requirement of not to have readmits for up to 30 days. So we're going to work with these guys to, we are the mobile workforce, so you can use some of our folks to where we have a contract with a hospital that says, look, these are the patients we're discharging. You need to go check on them for us. We can go check on them, make sure that they're taking their medications, doing the right thing. We can have the technology talk back to the hospital or their private docs, make sure they call us instead of going back to the emergency room, because a simple readmit for congestive heart failure costs a hospital about $30,000. So if we can save one or two patients a month, not going back to the 911 system, back to the ER, back to his facility, everybody saves money and reduces workload. So that's kind of where we're going, all working together, and I made it.
Sure.
Yeah, just for the record, to state that, yeah, yes, we support those initiatives, in particular, the in-the-field care and assessment and the triage of patients. You may know, or you may not know, that REMSA in Reno has a grant to do exactly that. As soon as we learned about the grant, I made an appointment with the leaders there, I know them pretty well, say, how's your program going to work? Because we need some of that, because we don't do that. And in fact, so to the degree that in Carson City, we can have a similar or even better program in terms of help with getting folks assessed out in the field, where do you need to be? Because it's still the case, Dr. Pintar can tell you from, or not, from her experience, a huge number of people in the ER don't need to be there. They don't necessarily know that they don't need to be there. So any help in that regard, whether it's before potentially get admitted or after discharge, because again, we don't tend to do those things, is appreciated and helpful. It's in all of our best interest to have folks signed up for Medicaid, except the flaw there is, you know, Medicaid is, who's going to see you if you have Medicaid? That's going to continue to be. So yes, we need to get more people signed up for Medicaid so that we can all have some potential to get some reimbursement. But the other, those other aspects all have to happen.
Lots of food for thought.
There is.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? I will entertain a public comment. I do want to thank members of the hospital board. Thank you, the doctors, for staying around. Thank you. I do appreciate that. And not hearing any public comment, motion for adjournment?
It's moved.
All right, we're out. Goodbye. Our next meeting is September 17.